Call to order. The regular board meeting scheduled for February 26, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbelied, in physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Eggle. I am a 4th grade student in Mrs. Holmes' class at Eagleville Elementary. I remember coming to Eagleville in the middle of kindergarten, approximately the 93rd or 94th day of school. I remember this because my first project was on the 100th day of school. I didn't know what to do because they had already begun before I joined the school. But my teacher, Mrs. Jay, helped me understand what needed to be done. Not only did she make me feel welcome, but also my mom, by sending notes home to let her know how I was adjusting to the new school. I felt the same about every teacher I've met since kindergarten at Eagleville, and I anticipate the same in the future. Eagleville Elementary is a school that helped my curiosity expand. With each new topic brings a new question, in each grade there is a new opportunity. For example, 2nd grade Google Docs count, 3rd grade recorder and orchestra, and 4th grade band. This last year is going to be very memorable. I thank Mrs. Holmes for all that she has done setting me up for a brighter future. It's not just the teachers, it's the staff and the volunteer parents that make every day special at Eagleville Elementary. Thank you.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all board members here this evening. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have a number of scheduled speakers. We have a number of people to recognize, and we certainly are appreciative of the Methacton Education Foundation being yet again another, bring us another opportunity to contribute to the education here at Methacton. First of all, I'd like to introduce Dr. Kokonhour. Dr. Kokonhour is our elementary principal at Eagleville Elementary School, and she's here this evening to help us recognize two staff members at Eagleville for their contributions to our students, to our staff, and to our community. Dr. Kokonhour?
Thank you. Good evening, school board, audience members. I am thrilled to present to you two of our staff members who are being honored this evening with the Methacton Award of Excellence. Mrs. Zurich, would you please come down? Our first recipient, Rita Zurich, began her Methacton career in 2008 as a recess aid at Arrowhead Elementary, and joined the Eagleville team in 2011, where she currently is an office assistant. Rita is one of those individuals that make you feel welcome and safe the moment that you meet her. She is someone who is always willing to lend a hand, she cares about the students and staff, and works every day to make Eagleville the best it can be. Her hard work and dedication come through in her work ethic and professionalism. Through many transitions, Rita has been a consistent force maintaining a high level of student focus and care. When a need arises, Rita is typically the first to respond, to say that she can assist or handle wherever assistance is needed. She is thoughtful and kind when greeting students, parents, and staff. She is an ear to listen, a hand to help, and a smile to welcome. Her spirit truly helps to fortify the positive school culture Eagleville is, and she has become part of the fabric of our school. Rita, thank you for all that you do.
Our next honoree, Mrs. Ponticello, would you please come down?
Mrs. Ponticello is a proud Methacton graduate and has been a member of the teaching staff for six and a half years. Laura began her career at Audubon Elementary and is completing her second year at Eagleville as a 3rd grade teacher. Mrs. Ponticello takes great care in planning her lessons and working to engage students in learning at hand. Laura also collaborates with her colleagues in order to teach and support the whole child. She embodies the qualities you think of in a superb teacher. She is caring, creative, thoughtful, student-centered, engaging, and motivating. Laura always has a kind word or gesture for both students and staff, and she works hard to hone her craft as an educator. Walking into her classroom, you are met with warmth and a flurry of student activity. Students are asked to stretch their thinking and feel confident and safe to take those risks. She knows how to make each student feel important. Beyond her work in the classroom, Laura is always willing to lend a hand and support both students and staff. Most days, you will find her coming in early and leaving late. Students love to see her outside of the classroom and appreciate when she stops into the science fair and other activities. She is very deserving of the Methacton Award of Excellence. Thank you.
We'd like you to join and get recognition from all members of the board. So if you want to line up, we'll meet you in the middle for a photo. Well done. I believe we have President Beam, and we have our executive director, Ms. Nikki Krelovich. Would Nikki and Mr. Beam please come forward?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Tonight, we have for the board is a check presentation for $9,548.48, a grant award for 3rd grade coding for all four elementary schools. Ms. Darlene Balliger-Pirnok here with us tonight. She filed this application to purchase one classroom set of Ozbot EVO coding robots for each elementary school, Arrowhead, Eagleville, Woodland, and Warseth, reaching up to 400 students every year. These Ozbots will allow our science teachers to implement STEM activities connected to the PA Science framework in their classrooms. The Ozbot robots will allow students to participate in challenges, to learn the basics of coding, to develop design process skills, discover science concepts, and incorporate the PA STEM competencies. Reinforcing the basic tenants of STEM, the Ozbots will give students experience in problem-solving, creativity, critical thinking, and cooperative learning. Thank you, Mrs. Balliger-Pirnok, for going above and beyond, for partnering with the foundation and the district to bring these innovative classroom tools to all of our 3rd graders at Methacton. If we could have our 3rd grade teachers and 3rd graders come down for the photo op, now's your chance to bring your big smiles.
I'm good.
Can you guys tell us how you like these Ozbots?
You did? What's your name? Oh, Ethan, sure. Well, good, and you're in 3rd grade now?
Yeah.
Good for you. Well, you're going to learn all about these Ozbots.
If there ever was a teacher that was considered a rock star, think Darlene. If you would stand for a second. She doesn't wear, yeah. She doesn't wear leather and grow big hair like the rock people do in the 80s, but she's a rock star in the hearts of everyone here at Methacton, and we appreciate all the efforts that you've taken over the years, and again, this one, and thank you for leading this for us. Very appreciate it. You got it. Next on the agenda, I'm going to ask if it's okay if we just switch 3 and 4 so we're not moving too much here this evening. So I'd like to ask Ms. Ricky, our supervisor for professional development and continuous improvement, to come forward. There's a handout at your place seating for an update on the library project, and the reason we want her to be here this evening is not only to apprise you of what we're doing and the progress we're making on this project, but also to recognize that this is a project that really stemmed from another partnership between the district, our librarians, and the Methacton Education Foundation. So, Ms. Ricky, if you'd mind sharing with the board where we are with this project and how we need to proceed.
Yes, thank you. In front of you in your handouts, you can follow along, and I'll explain each picture as we go through. Our K-6 students visit their school library on a regular schedule at least once a cycle. Additionally, our librarians work with students outside of their scheduled class period to choose books, work on projects, participate in Reading Olympics, and in collaboration with classroom teachers, and much more. Our librarians seek to provide students with the opportunities for growing and learning that go beyond the traditional concept of a library, by offering opportunities to experience learning in a multitude of ways. Our libraries have incorporated many STEM-based activities over the last several years, including coding, green screening, digital presentations, and more. In recent years, they've been attending workshops, visiting libraries with strong maker stations, and connecting with experts virtually to further expand their work with students. A grant proposal was submitted to the Methacton Education Foundation to further this work. The grant focus is on repurposing an area of the library to become a STEM maker space. They will be incorporating these STEM maker activities into their library curriculum. They'll be collaborating with classroom teachers to enhance classroom lessons by including these STEM principles as students work in both the library and in the regular classroom. They will also be creating a library of STEM maker activities for teachers to access for classroom use. Our work with the elementary librarians connects directly with our strategic plan goals. We want to build the understanding and incorporation of the 4Cs: communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking into all of our lessons, and help build the learning connections for students throughout the day. Furniture and supplies will be purchased to outfit this portion of the library to be best suited for the collaborative nature of the STEM maker learning. Shown in the pictures are some examples of furniture that we've explored. We're working with a designer from the Corbett Center in Norristown in order to best plan out what could work best in the space and to also get furniture and supplies that best meet the needs of what our librarians have asked for in these spaces. On the next several slides, I've included photos of the areas at each of the five libraries that will be repurposed. We're excited to be able to bring to you in a couple of months the before and after photos, so that you can see what has happened in those areas. I'm particularly proud of the librarians and the work they've done with these, because it's been difficult to kind of envision what the space would look like, being that it has been the way it was for so many years. There's a lot of additional space that will be now open to the students that formerly was perhaps teacher space or perhaps storage space, so the libraries will be much bigger and much more open for our students. I've also included some photos of items that our librarians have been looking to purchase for the activities in these areas. Many of these materials have been in use in some of our libraries, but now will be expanded to an offering for all of our students. And in addition, many of these materials are things that our librarians have learned about and have been able to see the value for their classroom because of the work that they've done with librarians in the area and the different workshops that they've been attending. Our next steps for this project include you, the school board, accepting the donation from the Methacton Education Foundation that was based on the grant that was written. Our furniture and materials will then be ordered. Our Director of Facilities will be working with the librarians and our building principals to install the furniture and do any of the reconfiguration in the areas as needed. Our librarians will be working throughout the end of the year and over the summer to update curriculum to include these maker space activities, and the large-scale use of the spaces will begin in the fall.
Are there any questions for Ms. Ricky at this point in time? We expect that as progress is being made and as the final touches are put forward and submitted to the foundation for their approval, we'll continue to update the board as part of the process. And of course, I think, you know, we'll certainly be planning with the foundation and the rest of the board for a kickoff event for these, to, you know, publicize the great work that our librarians and the foundation have done along with our administrative team. But at this point, are there any questions where we stand at this point? No? Okay, thank you very much. If the board members would be so kind to take their seats in the front row, we will ask Dr. Sisnovy to come forward to give us the three-year technology plan.
Excuse me. All right, hello and welcome. Tonight, I plan to present the core technology elements for the next three years. I'll start with a review of major historical milestones, and then discuss the department's structure. I'll move on to reviewing each of the four areas that support our daily instruction and operations. One note I'll just mention that I will be highlighting some costs. They are estimates and estimations based on today's rates and are subject to change. So this timeline represents the major milestones in our department since I came onboard in 2012. This is definitely not an exhaustive list of everything we've accomplished, but it highlights how we've evolved as a district from a technologies perspective over the past seven years. As you can see, each project provides scaffolding for subsequent projects. For example, our early infrastructure projects made it possible for us to implement wireless devices in the classroom through Mets Connect. Insights gained from Mets Connect allowed us to create an elementary vision for technology and implement a one-to-one environment for our secondary schools. This slide truly gives me and my staff a sense of pride, because it was only a few years ago, we didn't have wireless, and today, we're regarded as one of the leaders in instructional and operational technology in the county. From a department structure, our department is comprised of 12 staff members, including myself. There's a central registrar, data specialist, three technology specialists, a network manager, technology coordinator, three integrators, and a technology secretary. Looking forward in the next three years, we do not anticipate any staffing changes From a financial standpoint, we've proposed the following budget for the 1920 school year. Listed are the anticipated operating lease and staffing costs. Each of these, each of the line items represent what is known as an object code in the technology operating budget. For example, the first one, instruction regular programs, have software and programs directly related to the instruction. For instance, our Alex Math in our library programs. Next year's budget, as you can see, reflects a $124,000 reduction in current years. Driving that number are the way we're managing and implementing our server environment. We're moving toward more cloud and virtualization, reduction in network connectivity costs, a reduction in support contracts where we're doing more inside or internal and warranties. Also, we're not anticipating as many projector and smart board repairs next year. Now, we will examine each of our core areas, starting with our core applications and systems. Items listed in this section are critical systems that are utilized by our internal and external stakeholders, so our students, teachers, even our community members. Under each item, I list details and recommended action that I believe should take place in the next three years. The first one listed, and again, this is really just in alpha order, is our video surveillance system. This is what I presented last week in detail and what you're voting on tonight. So if approved, we anticipate the project to be completed by June 30 of this year. Our content management system, better known as our Methacton website, is one of the main tools we use to communicate to our community, is where we have teacher websites and other important district and school information. Recommended action is that we continue that annual support contract for the next three years. With regard to our email system, we have a system which is known as Microsoft Exchange. We're currently have an on-premise exchange environment, and we need to do something about, which is in version 2013, and we need to do something about that version and update it this fall, which we have anticipated on doing. We also have what is known as an email archiver. That's something that allows us to maintain compliance with our data retention policies as well, allows us to complete our write-to-know requests as they come in. Continuing with our financial and HR system, we replaced this five years ago, and I don't anticipate any changes. G Suite, you know, better known as, again, Google, has become an essential tool used by our students, staff, and teachers every day. Our focus will be to continue professional development and integration in classrooms and operations through G Suite, and I just wanted to highlight that as much as we do with G Suite in this district, from this presentation being on Google slides to the video conference I attended today at Skyview with somebody in Greece, all of that is a free tool to us. Our mass notification system, School Messenger, this is what we use for inclement weather and other port announcements. Again, we're going to continue that support contract. And finally, our multi-function printers, we just renewed the lease this July for another five years, so we're going to see that lease out, and then I'd recommend putting out another RFP for April 2023. The system gives me most thanks, as I expressed in the education committee, is our phone system. This is, was installed in 1996. We've been currently, the phone system project's been currently underway for months. We've been reviewing and planning out a potential replacement in summer of 2019. Our current system, as I mentioned, was, is approximately 23 years old and has reached its useful life. We are in a position where we are able to find certain parts and companies that support this system. In fact, Ashib itself has not been in the phone business for some years. We're looking to bring forward to the property committee in March what our recommendations are for that phone system. Finally, our student information system, Power School, it was rolled out in 2017. I don't anticipate any, you know, changes from that system, and then I'd recommend, and we will be reevaluating a nurses module as that contract comes due in December 2021. Moving on to our end-user devices, by far, our largest group is our one-to-one devices. Each student, grades 7 through 12, receive a Chromebook. We anticipate approximately about 825 units per year that we need to hand out to our 7th and 10th graders. Obviously, that number fluctuates based on student population. We approximate the cost to be about, you know, $335,000 a year, which these items are leased. We still have a number of areas where we utilize desktops, such as our support staff and several labs. They've been in place for a number of years and coming up on a refresh cycle. Next fall is part of the budgeting process. I'll be evaluating these devices for a possible replacement in 2021. Our elementary classroom technology design was derived from an elementary vision established in 2016, which was a byproduct of two Mets Connect initiatives. The final design included iPads, Chromebooks, and iPad carts and laptops dispersed throughout each of the elementary schools. We'll be reevaluating this design this fall. We'll probably conduct a process similar that we did prior, where we're seeking teacher input in terms of what the appropriate device design will be for those areas. And then finally, we have a number of staff laptops and mobile labs that will also need to have action taken place. We've budgeted for replacements of iPad carts and laptops in the 1920 school year. And then, from a laptop perspective, which we issued to all teachers and administrators, currently, we are on a, we'll call it a leap year, where we don't have to provide any to any staff for the 1920 school year, so we are anticipating 160 units that come due in 2021. All right, from a network server infrastructure standpoint, I'm going to highlight some areas. I'm not going to get real super techie. I did this from an outside approach, so if you're coming into our network, the first thing you presented it with is what is known as a firewall. I don't anticipate any changes in our firewall, which protects us from outside network threats, and also our packet shaper, which is something that actually shapes our internet, our network traffic. Both of those systems, our appliances, should be reevaluated in 2022. The only item to note on this slide is that we need to replace our S-series switches this spring in preparation of our camera and phone system implementations. I discussed this last week during the camera system presentation. Just to reinforce, again, currently, our current camera system is operating on a separate network, separate from our main data network, and our intent is to consolidate, consolidate into one instead of maintaining a second network that would just be exclusive just to one system. Additionally, the phone system, just as a Additionally, the phone system, just as a reminder, is, we're moving to something which is known as VoIP or Voice Over IP, and that all takes place over our network as well. The thing I'll mention, as I highlighted last week, that cost is actually reduced by $40,000 because I've applied for E-rate funding, which we will receive. These components make the, make up the other main elements of our infrastructure. And I, and the item, items to highlight are access points. In the summer of 2017, we updated our APs, so we're okay on the hardware end, which means like the, the physical unit itself. However, these things also come with licensing, and that comes due in 2020. Thus, we need to address a plan during that budget cycle for updating the licensing associated with that. From a professional development perspective, working with Dr. Katona and Ms. Ricky, our approach will be to provide differentiated training delivered through in-service collaboration with technology integrators and teachers on assignment, as well as other opportunities. Our areas of focus will be to continue, you know, moving forward with our one-to-one student environment. Augmented and virtual reality has really come a long way in the past year and have real applications in our classroom. There's, there's so many cool things. I'd love to talk with Dr. Zerby to maybe get our integrators here to show you some of the things that, that are available to our students in that space. It's really mind-blowing. And then focusing on other areas, such as our curriculum-based tools, our G Suite, as I mentioned before, and then Power School as it comes out with different, new features and enhancements, and as we look to continue to expand that product. Looking to the future, the major projects we see on the horizon, as I mentioned, again, one-to-one environment is not going anywhere. We're continuing to push enhancements to Power School, as well as integrating it, integrating Power School to other systems, and other systems to other main core systems we have just for data integrity. Some of the other projects listed here are ones that I mentioned, but what I wanted to highlight is that this is not an exhaustive list. This evolves as, as we continue to move forward, and there's other, a lot, actually, many sub-projects that are also, you know, in the works as far as this timeline goes. So, from a tech plan, that's what I have for you tonight. And I do want to apologize if I, I try to keep any type of tech speak to a minimum, but it was the best I could do in the context of this presentation, so thank you so much.
If the board members will take the seat at the table, we'll take the questions.
Hi. Hey, Brian.
Thank you so much for that, that technology update. Members of the board, any questions that you may have? I'll start with my left here. Any questions from members of the board?
I asked online at education, but thank you.
And how about to the right? Any member, any questions? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Troy. This is definitely something that we've kind of been looking for in the past, and it's great to see this. It definitely wasn't too techie for us, so I appreciate everything that you put forward. Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the CSIU software that HR and finance uses is, I hate to kind of ask it this way, but is Tim on board with us? I know that we've had in, in finance committee meetings, some frustrations with the software, some of the limitations there. Is this something that we're kind of sticking with for our cost and we're used to type thing, or what do you think?
There's supposed to be a good upgrade coming out that's going to make it more web-based until that comes out and we see how that is. I don't really think making a switch at any point in time would be a good decision because the new web-based thing, which we already have using, might actually serve all our needs.
Great. Thank you. Second question is the one-to-one Chromebook. Has there been any thought in putting out a, a survey to, you know, students and parents kind of, you know, a couple of years down the road in this next two to three years, you know, to get the general feedback? As board members, I think we hear, you know, the positives and the negatives of it. I was just wondering if there's any, you know, future plan of a survey to the community for that?
So there's, if you could recall, I'm not sure, Mr. Ryan, if you were on the board at the time, but in 2014, 15, we implemented a survey done by a national company called Bright Bites, and that provides a lot of insights, not only just in the technology itself, but how it's utilized and in all the various pieces that go into it. So like the skills that you're, you're gaining with using all of that. I actually just had a meeting with that representative last week, and I'm looking forward to doing that again, because what they built into that tool is some trending analysis, so we'll be able to see where we were and how we are now that we've really rolled out one-to-one. And then we could add some other custom questions into that to gain feedback specifically for that one-to-one implementation. So that is something that I'm looking forward to doing in the near, near future.
Great. Thank you. And last question is, in regards to the tech budget, you know, you kind of listed some of the future anticipated projects over the next three years. Is that incorporated into our actual financial model, Tim, or is that a generic, you know, 2% moving forward in terms of technology?
That's actually their budget.
That is the actual budget there. Perfect. Thank you, Brian.
Staffing piece, I will say, changes based on healthcare, other things that occur.
But all the main projects are.
Things that are, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Ne, okay. Mr. Navarre.
Thanks. All right. Thanks, Troy. That was, that was really good. School Messenger and Communications, are we, are we looking to consolidate to one program? And there was talk before about Power School and School Messenger, and we're trying to roll them all into one. Is that still active?
So Power School itself is a strategic partner with School Messenger, and so what we did was we bridged the data together. Power School, if you would go to them as the company peers and try to buy a product, they would recommend one of their strategic partners, which would be, you know, School Messenger. So my recommendation would be to maintain our current relationship with School Messenger as our main notification platform.
Great. Thanks. I didn't, I didn't know that. Did I read that? I guess, two more questions. One on the switches, you say we're leasing switch equipment? We're not buying switches, is that right?
We will be leasing switch equipment. That is correct.
Why are we leasing instead of buying?
What we do is that provides us the advantage of whether or not that technology, the term of the lease, if, through a lease, we actually will pay less on that technology potentially, depending on the structure of the lease, or if we do a dollar buyout. And so what that does, it gives us a decision point to say at that moment in time, do we want to maintain that equipment? Do we think there's still useful life, depending on, you know, the hardware and the software support available? Can we get a few more years out of it? Or do we need to replace it, you know, at that point, return it to the leasing company? Buying it right, outright now kind of takes that decision point away from us, and then we just kind of own it at that point in time. So moving forward like a dollar buyout lease or something along those lines with that equipment will give us the flexibility to look down the road and make a decision point that, you know, whether to extend it and/or return it at that point.
I think, Mr. Booker, if you could help us here. So with the leasing program that we have, you know, typically, in a lease, you would pay, you know, some type of either service charge and/or interest on, on that lease. Ours are pretty low, or sometimes they've been at zero.
That's correct.
Okay. Just to kind of give you an idea.
So if the technology has some vast improvement, we can get out of it within the timeframe of that lease, we do dollar buyout, so at the end, it's going to be a dollar to buy it out either way. But if there's any technology advancements that we need to be able to take care of, we can then get them back and get the new ones right then and there.
Within the term of the lease? Or just at that?
Just at the end of the lease.
That's true.
Okay. Switches don't really, I mean, what's the useful life on a switch?
I would, I would anticipate, you know, five to seven years.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave that go. The other one then, we talked about laptop labs in our COLA. Given that, now that the one-to-one initiative is in full blast, is that something that's really needed?
Yeah, there's still our labs. For example, our art lab is a lab that we maintain. We also maintain another lab in our ed tech department, which requires a more advanced computing, let's say, like processor for like AutoCAD or something along those lines that necessarily couldn't run on a Chromebook. They're very minimal, those are like the only two labs that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Troy. I did, I'm going to ask the, sort of the same question I ask each time on these things. We, we have implemented the one-to-one, and we, we talk about the technical, technical side of implementing the one-to-one, and we sort of develop, sort of go-as-we-go approach of integrating the educational aspects. And I think there's a balance between allowing the, the staff to develop how they want to use the Chromebooks, but also a consistency. So, I, I mean, you could speak towards that, but one thing I would like to see at some point is more of, okay, what are we planning to do, use technology for for the next three, five, seven years? How are we going to integrate it into the educational aspects of it? And I, I don't, don't discount the, the hardware and, and software and so forth and the infrastructure, but I'd still like to see more of a plan around how we're going to integrate it with education. Like, one of you could speak towards that.
Very good point, Mr. Winters. Dr. Katona, do you want to speak to that? I know that you're doing some work with our COLA and a number of the other building principals with regards to developing and further developing the integration of the Chromebooks. Can you give us a summary of where you're at with that?
We've been doing some research on some of the best practices with it, making sure that we're obviously incorporating, that as we put a plan together, that it obviously incorporates the content standards, but also standards related to the use of technology. Our, actually, our teachers on assignment at the secondary level have been doing a great deal of work with, planning with Mrs. Ricky in terms of in-services, as well as doing some modeling for teachers at times in the classroom. At our COLA, for example, when they have their professional learning community, sometimes going to them, sitting with the teachers, going over some of the things, you know, not just related to the one-to-one, but in general, some PD questions that they might have and ways that they might better utilize that technology instructionally. So we do have it on our agenda regularly when I meet with the principals on a monthly basis, and we continue to work on that.
So as we, as we progress with that, we'll bring that report as an update to the board. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr.?
Just one more comment. We're talking about the, the educational aspects of it, and I was focused on the technical and the budgets, but at least, I've seen, I guess with my own kids and my own wife, the work that the tech integrators do to bring some of these new tools into the classrooms. We've got, you know, I don't know, I know Brad Dale is in my wife's classroom all the time. They're always tweeting up a storm about all the great things that they're doing. I see the work that, you know, teachers like Pam Craig are out, you know, they're going to PTC, and they're at these conferences, and they're learning, bringing a lot of these tools back into our classrooms, which is phenomenal work. I think that's, you know, that's a great place where that integration happens.
Well said. Any other comments for Dr. Sisnovik? Thank you, Dr. Sisnovik.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. That ends our presentations for the evening. We'll go on to item number six, reports.
Congratulations again.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. We'll start with our finance committee. Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you. The finance committee met on February 13th. The meeting was called order at 6:31 PM. All committee members were in attendance. In addition to, Mr. Glenn Willard from PFM was invited as guest to the meeting. We started off with a presentation from Mr. Willard. He provided us with a document and reviewed information in that document, including interest rate trends, the district's current debt portfolio, the 6.5 million planned borrowing to fund the 2019 master plan projects, and a timeline for the borrowing. We asked Mr. Willard various questions, and we also discussed negotiated versus competitive bond sales. The committee discussed various factors that will impact the planned borrowing amount, including the final, the final amount required to fund the 2019 master plan projects, remaining funds from the 2018 borrowing and other sources, and use of the 2018-19 budget surplus to fund these projects. We also discussed the timing of the planned borrowing and requested that Mr. Willard, attending the board's meeting in March, to present the proposed borrowing terms. Prior to Mr. Willard leaving the meeting, we gave the public the opportunity to ask questions of him, and we took questions from Jim Molly from Warsester and John Andrews from Lower Providence on topics outlined in the minutes to the meeting. We then moved on to our monthly financial reports. As usual, Mr. Bricker presented the list of bills, the Treasury report, a report on budgetary transfers, and the revenues and expenditure reports for the month of January. Mr. Bricker responded to questions received prior to and at the meeting. He also provided us with commentary on year-to-date revenues and expenditures in comparison to budget for the period. We also reviewed and discussed the budgetary transfers not requiring board approval. On tonight's meeting agenda, our approval of the list of bills, the Treasury report, and budgetary transfers. The healthcare consortium report was not available for this meeting. However, Mr. Bricker did provide an update on several matters relating to the consortium. Other discussion topics included an update on the 2019-2020 budget. Mr. Bricker and his staff are continuing to review various areas of revenue and expenses. He's also working on a forecast for the current fiscal year for us to use in evaluating the budget for next year. In addition, Dr. Zerby is in the process of completing his evaluation of staffing needs for adjustment in the budget as needed. On the agenda for tonight's meeting is the approval of our contribution to the MCIU member services budget, and our share of this budget decreased slightly from last year. Final discussion topic was the student activity accounts. Mr. Bricker provided us information on the accounts to remain open, accounts to be closed, and the disposition of remaining funds in these accounts. This matter is also on the agenda for approval at tonight's meeting. We then heard, courtesy of the floor, and during that period of the meeting, we heard from John Andrews and Joe Beckman of Lower Providence, and Jim Molly from Warsester, and the items they discussed and asked questions about are listed in the agenda, are the minutes from our meeting. And our meeting adjourned at 8:21 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Property and Transportation Committee, Mr. Navarre.
The Property and Transportation Committee met on February the 18th. All committee members were present, as were Dr. Zerby, Mr. Bricker, Mr. Fretz, and Dr. Sisnovik. From Fedavia, we had Mr. Sikala, Mr. Nowitzki, and Mr. Kozier, all of whom were here last week. And from Access Security Corporation, Dan Cogan and Kane Murray, also, who were here last week and presented to us. Tim had the honor of kicking off the meeting this week. Good, nice change for him, but he still had to stick around for the whole meeting. Tim talked about the transportation changes coming for next year, the proposed change in high school student parking fees that would increase from $25 to $75, but a $50 discount would be provided for students who give up their regular seat on a bus route to enable more efficient routing, and that will roll out in March with the normal timeline for parking passes. Act 372 forms will be required this year for non-public students. We ran a pilot program for that last year with minimal, little to no issue. Mr. Bricker reiterated that non-public students receive their transportation communication from their schools, not directly from Methactin. We also talked about daycare transportation changes. The proposed change for next year, which after a comment from the floor, Dr. Zerby and Mr. Bricker agreed to postpone for a year, was that daycare transportation will be limited to the sending areas of these elementary schools, so that those students are treated the same as others, as non-daycare students in those schools. The, under the video surveillance system, which Dr. Sisnovik presented on last week, I won't reiterate all of that. Dr. Zerby did talk to us about a new sign for the field sponsorship, which we also discussed last week here. I'll reiterate that the sign came out of the Capitol campaign, thanks to a $15,000 donation from the Dorn and Pelicano families. There's a 10-year contract on that sign, and then there's a second $10,000 donation from another family that's pending for a community bench. Dr. Zerby also presented the committee with a proposed timeline for the next decisions regarding Arrowhead. We discussed that last week as well, so no reason to get into those details. There's lots in this, in the report. You can read it all for yourselves. We talked about the Capitol projects for the week, excuse me, for the summer of 2018. The committee was presented with a full-punch list of items that remain to be fixed. That will be an ongoing monthly item for the committee. And then we reviewed the change orders that Bob Nowitzki spoke to last week. Mr. Fretz gave the committee an update on the pool HVAC system. There are still issues with that system. They narrowed some of them down to abandoned temperature probes and some corrections to operating modes, which made a marked improvement. But there's also discussion about there may be a new hot water line required in order to finalize commissioning. Under 2019 projects, Mr. Nowitzki presented the committee with an updated status report on the, all of our consultant contracts. Notably, we talked about the additional work scheduled for roofing consulting to take a more detailed look at the derated roofs in the district so that we avoid the surprises that we found on the high school roof this summer. We also talked about the second phase of the MEP plan, which was discussed last week. That's the unit ventilator project at the high school. Courtesy of the floor, we had four different sessions, courtesy of the floor, because of all the outside agencies that were there. There were quite a few people that spoke, particularly on the issue of the daycare. So, thanks everybody that did come out and speak to that. All of the notes there are there in the minutes posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevarret. The Education Committee, Ms. Reese.
We met on February 4th. The entire committee was in attendance with the addition of Dr. Sisnovik, Dr. Sergini, and Dr. Spiewack. First up was the class rank review summary, which we spoke a little bit about at the work session last week. Basically, a, Dr. Cottone and Dr. Sergini put together a thorough presentation and recommendation that will be forwarded to the policy committee and then a board vote. As you see and as we discussed last week, it is Policy 214, that's for a first reading this evening. In short, if the board approves, a student's ranking going forward, beginning with the class of 2020, will no longer be reported on the transcript. The rank will only be reported by the counseling department upon request initiated from a post-secondary institution or scholarship committee. This decision came after much consideration, input, and review of changes in the area's educational system. Most neighboring districts do not report class rank and most schools do not require rank for acceptance. Next up was an update on athletics with Dr. Spiewack. He reviewed the athletic accomplishments of the fall season, including the successful start to girls volleyball at Arcola. There was discussion, the district is still working through clubs and interest groups. The biggest part of his update was the introduction of Unified Sports. The district is hoping to implement the program soon and as we discussed last week, and we looks like we're on, that is a go. And up next was the technology plan, which you all saw this evening. Thank you. We, the special education audit will be moved to March. There was a K-4 report cards update. Ms. Ricky reported that the work is progressing and the next step is to review all grade levels information to design a draft and talk to parents and specialist area teachers. Dr. Cottone also let us know about the kindergarten readiness and registration. There was an information session held at Arcola on February 21st from 7:00 to 8:00 with the Education Foundation attending earlier in the evening for families who may want to learn about the pre-K scholarship opportunities. As of the beginning of the month, 93 families have signed up. Kindergarten registration will happen at Woodland from March 18th to March 22nd. Courtesy of the floor, Karen Lutz would like the district to consider Unified Sports and had some other comments that you can see. That was prior to us actually being able to go forward, hopefully, in the spring. Sandra Katz prefers the district start Unified Sports in the spring, but understands it falls more logistically possible. She hopes staff can at least attend the February training or a May event. Jenny Geis would like more technology devices for kindergarten. She suggested more communication to kindergarten teachers, schools, and the public about kindergarten registration because she found out on the website. She suggested more hard copies, use Constella, post on bulletin boards, apartment buildings, et cetera. Ms. Geis would also like to go back to kindergarten teachers performing the screening instead of reading specialists or other staff. Amy Kenworthy, she commented she would prefer parents to be sent an individual notice of report cards. Kit Markle reiterated report card idea and kindergarten screening idea. She would also like to see a screening of first graders who are new to Methacton and do not attend kindergarten in the district. Johnny Andrews expressed his unhappiness with the Arrowhead resolution vote. He feels the board's minds were made up beforehand and that there were no facts and lots of emotion. He also questioned why full-day kindergarten is affordable now, but wasn't in the past. Jim Mollie stated that the board president said there would be lots of discussion around Arrowhead, but there was not. He asked if board ever received the utilization report. He felt full-day kindergarten cost is not accurate because need new salary calculations, not old. He said option B was never discussed fully and he has option J for Jim. Michelle Jackson-Greenwald thanked the district for considering Unified Sports and we adjourned at 8:55 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Policy Committee, Ms. Hall.
The Policy Committee met on February 6th. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 with myself, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis, Mr. Winters, Dr. Zerbi, and Mrs. Sharon Montain of Sweet Stevens-Cats and Williams. Several policies were reviewed and discussed as referenced in the minutes. Policies recommended for first reading include 006 minute meetings, sorry, 114 gifted education, 350 criminal charge convictions, 351 drug and substance abuse, 913 non-school organizations, groups, and individuals, and 214 class rank, as discussed last week. If adopted at next month's meeting, beginning with the class of 2020, a student's class rank will not be reported on the student's transcript. During courtesy of the floor, Pete Clark of Lower Providence commented on Policy 349 and the meeting adjourned at 7:52 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. The MCIU board met on January 23rd, 2019. There were six initial budgets that were approved that evening. Two of the most notable ones were the district membership services budget and the IU facilities budget. The district member services budget represents the cost of providing membership services to all the districts in the MCIU, from the Office of Professional Learning, the Office of Community and Government Relations, and the Office of Technology Services. As Mr. Earnshaw mentioned earlier, you will see that on Methacton's portion on the agenda tonight for approval. In terms of the facilities budget, the total amount is a little over $3 million, which is roughly $200,000 less than last year's budget. The second item was the 2017-2018 audit report, was presented by Ed Furman of MELE. There were no significant findings in the audit report. There were several pages of HR-related items, but I did want to note that the chief financial officer of the IU, Stan Whistler, will be retiring with an effective date of June 30th, Next, the MCIU was pleased to announce that their partner organization, known as Exploration PHP, has introduced a new program, the Behavioral Health Rehabilitative Services Program, which will serve children with mental and behavioral health challenges. This program is something that's been in the mix for quite some time, will truly service many of the students with those needs. There was a job fair held on February 13th to fill those new positions that this program will create. Hopefully, it was a successful job fair and should hear about more of that tomorrow night at the next IU board meeting. Speaking of the meeting for tomorrow night, the meeting will actually be held at the Early Learning Academy on West Main Street instead of the IU main office. The administration wants to give a tour of the facility as they will be seeking approval of bids for renovations on this facility. This has also been something that's been in the works for quite some time, prior to me even joining the board of the IU. It is hoped that in the coming months, they will be bringing bids to the IU board for approval and to start the work shortly thereafter. Looking forward to touring the facility tomorrow night. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Next up would be North Monco Technical Career Center, Ms. Drummond and Ms. Reese.
Our last board meeting was the January 21st, so our last North Monco meeting was January 23rd. It was a relatively short meeting and they were discussing all the competitors that will be at districts. And there were some winners, which I will have for you to announce next time. We did have a Methacton winner at the farm show, Kevin Gall. There was an open house on February 14th and I know the eighth graders had a field trip planned and it got delayed due to snow, but I believe that's rescheduled already. And our meeting was supposed to be tomorrow night, but that also had to be rescheduled, so we will not have an official meeting until March, so I don't have an official February report yet.
All right, well, thank you for those updates. And now the Student Board Representatives.
Thank you. On February 28th, March 1st, and March 2nd, the Methacton Theater Company will perform filler on the roof. The group has been rehearsing since December. On Friday, March 8th, senior boys will compete in Mr. Methacton and they'll compete in categories like casual wear and talent to win the title. The Methacton Merry-thon will take place on March 22nd and students will take part in activities and stand-up from 2:00 to 10:00 in support of curing pediatric cancer and the funds will be donated to the Four Diamonds Fund. On Thursday, March 14th, will be the senior banquet held at Normandy Farms and seniors will have dinner, dance, and find out who wins the superlatives. And lastly, the Methacton Spring Gymboree will be on Wednesday, March 20th, in the Arcola auditorium, and this is where orchestra students throughout the district will perform together.
Just a little update in sports. The boys varsity team recently, for basketball, sorry, recently defeated Perkeomen Valley for the title of pack champions, along with the girls varsity cheer team, who also won the title of pack champions. Members from both the girls and boys varsity swim teams made it into districts and will be competing March 1st and 2nd. And we are looking forward to the spring sports that are just starting back up soon. We wish tennis, baseball, softball, and both boys and girls lacrosse and track a good season. And also in theater, Arcola will be holding their musical soon. This year it is Beauty and the Beast. The first show is March 8th and then there will be two performances on March 9th. Thanks.
Thank you for those updates. Now the Methacton Education Foundation, Ms. Kralovich.
I should probably start sitting a little closer to the front. It feels like a long time to get down. Tonight, the Methacton Education Foundation would like to thank Amanda Kelly, who lined up Six ABC to come out to our check presentation from Ambler Savings Bank at Warsester Elementary on January 31st. Thank you, Amanda. The coverage that Six ABC provided increased our reach exponentially. We've had people who are in the district who finally are hearing about the foundation thanks to Amanda and Six ABC. At that presentation, we highlighted the STEM maker spaces and the great things that Methacton is doing with STEM. Thanks also to Dr. Zerbi and Ms. Drummond and Ms. Hall for coming out and joining us for the check presentation. We also would like to thank our generous donors who contributed to the foundation through the EITC tax credit program. We are beginning enrolling for the need-based pre-K scholarships for students living in the Methacton School District. This is probably information that you already know, but to reiterate, research shows that students who start behind, stay behind. We are really excited to help level the playing field. We also hope that these scholarships will impact all of Methacton as research shows that children unprepared for kindergarten tax the resources of the entire system. We're asking for help from everyone in this room and in our community to share this great opportunity with folks who are economically disadvantaged in the school district. Not everybody is already in Methacton, so they may not know about this yet. We appreciate anybody here spreading the word. Speaking of EITC opportunities, for those of you who don't know, there is a huge disparity between the EITC credits available to public schools versus non-public schools. The foundation has already begun meeting with our local legislators to discuss this disparity and see what we can do to increase the public school EITC tax credits. That's all we have for now. Stay tuned for more big checks coming down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kralovich. Communications, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. There are a few items that I would like to share from the communications department tonight. First up, Methacton High School is featured this week in the Philadelphia Business Journal as one of Pennsylvania's top public high schools. The schools were ranked by SAT score for tests taken in 2018. Methacton's composite score average was 1204, which places them 19th out of 681 schools in the Commonwealth. The high school ranks 14th among the top 100 public high schools in southeastern Pennsylvania and Methacton ranks third out of the 23 high schools in Montgomery County. This achievement is something to be proud of and is a testament to the continued support of our board, our superintendent, teachers, support staff, students, and parents here in Methacton. Also, pending your approval of a Unified Sports program here at Methacton, the communications department is prepared to coordinate with the athletic department to host a recruitment day for high school students interested in signing up. If approved, more information would be made available in the near future. Another item of note that I would like to share, reading is always celebrated in Methacton schools, but this week, our principals and teachers are making it extra special for students. Warsester and Eagleville Elementary Schools are hosting guest readers as part of Read Across America. The National Education Association's annual event calls for every child in every community to celebrate reading every day, but especially on March 2nd, which is Friday, is it Friday? Yes, the birthday of the beloved children's author, Dr. Seuss. All week, guest readers are volunteering their time to read to classes and even entire grades. At Warsester on Thursday, CBS3 anchor and reporter Trang Do has graciously agreed to read to the third grade class. And on Friday, children's book author Brenda Meyer will be reading her book, The Little Red Fort, a modern twist on the fable The Little Red Hen to the student body over at Warsester. And finally, I would like to provide an update about the district's new online series showcasing the pride of Methacton. The focus of this project is to enhance how we articulate the many outstanding ways Methacton schools support student creativity and provide unique and inspiring learning opportunities. We shared the first edition, which featured Methacton's art program, through the SMOR newsletter last Tuesday. You can always check it out by going to www.methacton.org/showcase. Could I ask the members of the board to please have a seat out here? I would like to show you the full program.
I can't hear it without this.
That's what's in it.
Yeah. This should be it.
Okay. Thank you.
To me, what art means is first an method of expression and also a skill that can be used down the line.
You can easily succeed if you put the work into it.
This is some portrait I did. It's acrylic on cardboard. I'm pretty proud of it. I think it turned out pretty good.
I'm painting silk with silk fabric dyes, kind of like a stained glass style, more or less.
Practiced wise, is it really, to just get comfortable with the idea that you were letting grab me do the work?
I teach Studio Art I and Studio Art III. Studio Art I is just an introductory course. We cover all the basic elements and principles of art and really just a good foundation for students who want to continue on with art in our school and in our, just in general. Studio Art III is more intermediate-level course. That is one that we really reserve for students who are gonna move on either with a career in the arts or into our Advanced Placement Art Program.
I'm gonna be an art history major, so I wanna be a curator of museums. I just love art a lot, so I wanna be able to like, take the art that I know and like, be able to teach that to other people.
I'm gonna go for marketing. I'd probably mine, I mean, something like photography or graphic design, if I get the chance.
I am teaching AP Studio Art and Art II, and I also have the Life Skills Adaptive Art courses.
Within this coursework, we're able to explore creative problem-solving in a way that I think a lot of academic areas don't have the time to anymore. I think that, you know, when you talk about students who might not have the strength in another academic area or that maybe aren't, you know, the strongest in athletics or something like that, it's been important for us to make sure that we sort of identify who those students are and provide them opportunities to be successful so they can, you know, continue to build confidence and hopefully discovering something about themselves that is gonna lead to, you know, a career. that is going to lead to a career or some sort of fulfillment later on in life.
I don't think I know anybody who's been in this class that hasn't had a piece put on display at an art show or in the hallways or didn't have an opportunity to show their art from being in this class.
We have participated in poster contests. Just this year, one of my students won the Philadelphia Auto Show poster contest. So that was great. They all did participate with that. We have the Montgomery County Young Artist Show that is held at Montgomery County Blue Bell Campus. We also have the Tri-County Show. We also have a show coming up at Shenondale. So that'll be a professional show for my AP students. I'm super excited about that because the students actually get to sell their work there.
This class is a really special class. Like, you go to other districts and they have like four or five people in their APR program, but we have like 22.
There are a lot of possibilities for students who are creatively minded. And so we tend to think just math and science. Now, you know, it excludes a lot of career opportunities.
AP teaches you a lot more than just how to be an artist. It teaches you how to run your own life. It teaches you a lot about time management. It forces you to prioritize things that are most important. And I think it makes you more mature when you take this class.
It really sets you up for later on in life. So whether that's college or going to a tech school or just like starting up your own business if you want to.
The whole arts half here is kind of like its own little separate school. I would say it is definitely the best part of Methacton.
I was looking forward to this ever since the beginning of the year. And I can't believe I'm doing it right now, and it's just so much fun.
I teach art at Arcola. We do sculpture and ceramics predominantly, but also painting and drawing.
My class mostly covers painting, printmaking, and graphic arts, as well as drawing.
I could do six drawings. One of them is going to be something we draw together.
There are many purposes to this course, but every student can benefit. What I always tell my students is that everyone can benefit from the creative problem solving and thinking that comes from taking this class. So we do a lot of written exercise.
We're making coil pots using the coil method. We put it on using the score and the slip. And they make a ceramic jar or pot that holds something or has a purpose. I've just been so happy that we get to have the opportunity to do the creative stuff.
We really prepare them in 7th grade with things like color theory and basic drawing skills so that we can do more advanced things in 8th grade.
We also try to reach every student. We also try to look for those artists who try to spark something in every child. We try to show them that they have worth and talent beyond their math skills and their English skills.
I always have students in my classroom that come to me and say, "This is why I come to school." Giving them a place where they can feel confident and express themselves and kind of have a safe place, I think is really important.
Gather a little ink on your pen. The angle of your pen tip should be up into the brush.
I'm doing photography in my art class, and I really like it.
This course is a chance for them to express themselves creatively and to have an introduction to basic art techniques.
Art classes are just going to learn how to do things so I can try and do it at home if I can. Because I like doing artwork for my family.
I'm doing things that I know that try people with and try it.
You get to be creative and use your imagination.
I stress using your hands, getting messy.
I want to be an artist when I'm older.
I want to be an interior designer, which is kind of like an artist.
I like to introduce them to all kinds of mediums: art history, aesthetics, criticism, production. So they experience a little bit of everything.
You're making albums today based on the story that you've been in the library.
There's things that the arts teach that normal reading and math don't teach.
I just like being creative. It's not like math where you need to think so, 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 so much. Ideally, where you need to think so, 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 so much.
I think a child gets to bring their knowledge base and think at a higher level.
I just feel like it's really fun because I like playing with clay.
It's a really good class, and there's a really good teacher.
All right, guys. And if you didn't press that right in the place, I think that will fit nicely in that spot.
They have a place where they can be themselves and they can really shine and build their confidence.
Thank you, guys. Make sure to cover something else.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I would just like to mention, it takes a tremendous amount of work to put the video together, and then we combined that into a newsletter with a lot of photos. So Ms. Kelly has done a tremendous job not only bringing ABC News to certain events, but we felt that creating this series to highlight and showcase the great things of Methacton was important for us, not only as part of our way to introduce Amanda to the district, who comes to us from not being in the education industry, but more importantly, giving our students and our parents an understanding of all the great things across the district, as well as integrating well into the strategic plan. For the last year or so, we've had in the strategic plan some matters to address, our work with realtors in the area. And we think that the videos and this content will serve the new home buyers interested in this area a great service for knowing what the school district has to offer. So we're really proud of her work and thanks for the hard work. And thanks for the board for supporting that effort.
All right, it's back to you, Dr. Zerbi, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just have a few things. I just want to make note on the advisements on trips. Typically, we don't have the number of trips in these advisements as we've seen in the last three months. So I want you to know that when things don't get to my desk on a timely fashion, I have to make some challenging decisions. And I don't want to take it on myself to have to approve these things on a regular basis. So I just want you to know that I've communicated with the building principals, and you should not be seeing the number of trips that you see here. They should only be those things that are far and few between, that are last-minute notices that come up. So I just want you to be aware of that, and we're addressing that. Other than that, I have no other comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. At this time, we'll take public comment on board action items. So any items that are up for board action this evening, we'll welcome public comment at this time. Okay? Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik, Worcester. I have to apologize. I got an agenda that's missing all the even numbers. So it's going to be hard for me to quote what numbers I'm talking about. So list of bills. McAndrew's Law Office, $5,000? What's that one for?
I would ask if Mr. Booker, if you know that off the top of your head, but please don't feel obligated.
It's a legal settlement, and that's the opposing counsel's fee.
What's the legal?
Special needs.
Oh, special needs. Got one for DeShel Bartle-Dooly for $11.25.
I'd have to look that one up.
Well, that's the Shenondale legal fees.
I'm not sure that we understand the question then, if it's.
What's it for exactly? It's Shenondale. Is that the recent filing they did yesterday? Did a filing yesterday. Is that what the $11.25 is for?
I would assume no, since the filing just happened yesterday, but I can't speak to that.
Well, they had to prep for it, so is it prep for the filing yesterday?
Continue, Dr. Malik.
So that's a non-answer. Do you guys review these bills before you approve them? Or you just like sign off and don't review? Because.
I can't speak for the entire board, but yes, I do review.
Okay, so let me ask you this. What is the single biggest expense in the bills, excluding the wire transfers, if you've read them? Can you tell me what it is? Because I don't believe you have read them. So can you prove it to me and tell me what the biggest expense is?
Dr. Malik, I'm not doing this, so please continue with your comments.
Because I think you're BSing me. So the only way to prove it to me is tell me what the biggest expense is. And I don't think you know, because I just think you just sign off without looking at them. Right? I don't think you look at them. Can anybody up there tell me what it is?
Dr. Malik, you direct your questions at me.
Well, I just think you all just sign off and don't look.
And that's your opinion.
And can somebody prove me wrong? Student Activity Accounts. Guys spent hours. I sat through a meeting where Mr. Navarrette was incredulous about the student activity accounts. The total number, I think, is 38 grand for the student activity accounts. That's what the number, total amount, is. 38 grand is what the number is. Well, if you guys had spent half the time talking about the Arrowhead $22 million in savings, we'd be in a whole different ballgame. So you should think about that. Are we having money flow problems here at the district? Because I have a 21-year-old constituent who's being pursued for $59 by the Burckheimer people. Got a late notice and penalties and fees.
Is that an item that's on the agenda this evening?
Yeah, Burckheimer's got three, four items.
Pertaining to that particular issue?
I don't know. I got to find out.
Okay.
So now you're going after 21-year-olds for their summer work? Is that what's going on here? It's my son. It's my son. Sent them the tax return. Wasn't good enough. They want his W-2. Is that what you do now? You go after 21-year-olds?
Dr. Malik, there is no action item relative to that.
You go after 21-year-olds.
Okay, Dr. Malik.
You're that strapped for cash?
Please wrap up.
I'm wrapped.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with public comment on board action items? Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. One item on your agenda this evening is the calendar for the next school year. And as I tally up the number of days of instruction, for K to 4, I get 176. For 5 to 8, I get 176. And for 9 to 12, I get 178. And it seems to me that I could get up to 180 if I include some of the in-service days where the students are not in the classrooms, but the teachers are somewhere on official business. Now, a couple of years ago, we had a strike. And as a result of the strike, the Department of Education in Harrisburg disallowed a number of things such as in-service days. And that year, I think we got to 180. So also on the calendar are 19 days for Keystone testing. And I don't know, I think there are three different tests. And maybe someone can tell me that that only affects a small fraction of the students in the affected grades, whether it's for the whole day or an hour or two. It's not clear to me. And then there's one day listed as PSAT. I don't know what PSAT is. I know what SAT is. So I think unless the board is getting some information other than what is on the calendar, I think the board has reason to get some more information to understand what it is that's going on schedule-wise.
Mr. Andrews, would you like me to clarify those comments, those points there?
That would be excellent.
Okay, so I'm speaking. And Dr. Katona, please let me know if I'm out of line here. But the keystones are offered during a window of time, and it affects select numbers of students in the high school, as well as some students in Arcola. And so the students are, the testing is offered during that window as it's indicated on the calendar. It's not every day, and it's mandated by the state. The PSAT is a preparation for the SATs that all juniors and sophomores take on that day on the calendar. Does that help clear it up?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with public comment on board action items this evening? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes of the work session of January 15th, 2019, and the regular board meeting on January 22nd, 2019, is attached? Ms. Reese, and a second, Mr. Earnshaw. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Ms. Reese? All those in favor of the minutes? Okay. All those opposed? There's none. Okay. The motion carries. 9-0. Fiscal items. Mr. Booker?
Thank you. Tonight, for your review, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, the MCIU budget, which is a reduction of $1,099 from last year, the video surveillance recommendation of Access Security Corporation of Warminster, PA, five items on the master plan, and student activity accounts. Item number one should exclude the 6th grade Ski and Snowboarding Club. That is to remain open. All others are as written.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills, treasurer's reports, and budgetary transfers is attached? Mr. Winters, is there a second? Mr. Navarrette? Any comments from the board? Mr. Navarrette?
Mr. Booker? The list of bills, is first student the largest bill?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. For anybody else who's interested, the Finance Committee meets on the 2nd Wednesday of every month, and we have very detailed discussions about the list of bills.
Any other comments from the board on the list of bills, treasurer's report, and budgetary transfers? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the MCIU Member Services Budget for 2019-2020, as posted here on the agenda? Mr. Ryan, is there a second? Ms. Hall? I'm sorry, Ms. Drummond. I'm looking at Ms. Drummond and saying, "Ms. Hall." I apologize. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. May I have a motion to authorize the administration to engage Access Security Corporation of Warminster, PA and E+ Technology Incorporated of Pottstown, Pennsylvania, both co-stars-approved vendors, to procure and install Exact Vision Video Management Solution Video Surveillance System in each of the Methacton school buildings in the amount of $425,348.80, with an annual fee thereafter of $6,336. Ms. Hall, can I have a second? Mr. Winters? Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the master plan items 1 through 5 as presented? May I have a motion to approve the master plan items 1 through 5 as presented? Ms. Hall? Is there a second? Mr. Navarrette? Are there any comments from the board on these items?
I just want to make a note that there was, there was an update on item F5 from the work session where we included the recommended not to exceed $140,000.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Zerbi. Okay. Knowing that that has changed, are there any comments? None? Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item G, the student activity accounts. Do we have to amend? We do have to remove the 6th grade ski and snowboarding club? Is that correct, Mr. Bricker?
That is correct. It's the ski and snowboarding club, not the 6th grade. The ski and snowboarding club.
Thank you for the clarification. They do. Okay, so, we're going to... I think, Kyle, I need you to help me out here.
Sure. There's been no motion made, so whoever makes the motion can make a motion for items G1 through 4, with item 1, the revision as discussed, removing the ski and snowboarding club.
Can I have a motion to approve the student activity accounts, items 1 through 4, with the revision as discussed for item 1? Does that cover us, Kyle? Okay. Mr. Winters? And a second, Ms. Reese? Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries. Personnel items. We do not have Mr. Regina here this evening.
I'll take those.
Okay.
They're personnel items. There's items for employment professional, classified. There are items for change of status, classified, for a compensated leave professional, for for supplemental contracts, and classified substitute list, and volunteers. Let me just make note on a number of items. Please know that under 10, item C2, that there was revision from the work session agenda as per discussion and further deliberation with the Arcola Building Principal, the Director of HR, and myself. We are asking for you to retroactively approve her time from February 1st through the 22nd, which would have been this past Friday. She is now back in the classroom, and her assignment will be concluded. Additional changes from last week would have been on G4. G4 was added since the work session. Also, under H1, which is for that was added since the work session. And there was a date change on number, and a correction on number I6. I6 has been changed from, I believe it was February, might have been February 29th. There was another date, but it is actually supposed to be February 21st. So, that correction was reflected in the correction. And lastly, under supplemental contracts, under K3, the list of attached supplemental contracts has been adjusted, as well as a decrease in the dollar amount. So, it did read 109228.40. At the work session, it now reads 108228.80. And that's a result of some of the changes that occurred as hiring and moving of coaches right before the season starts. No, I'm sorry. And one last change. We added the attachment for, and the approval of contracts for outdoor education. Those are all for 5th grade at Skyview.
So, before I ask for a motion, does anyone want to take any of these personnel items separately? All right. Then, can I have a motion to approve items A through M under personnel as presented here? Mr. Ryan, is there a second? Ms. Reese? Any comments from the board? Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, just a question on coaches. Is that, is the updated list then posted to the website? Or is that, we can pull up?
Yes. Yes.
I guess, have we had conversations, maybe they've been in the Education Committee, about the struggle to find some of these coaches? There's still a number of vacancies that are on this list. We talked about turnover. It's probably not a discussion for here. It's probably a better discussion for education. But I think there needs to be some discussion about coach retention, turnover, why we have people necessarily moving from one sport to another, and why we think we have vacancies, and how we can fill them better.
Yeah, so, we had that discussion. And we, we're gonna, planning on doing a couple of things. But I just want you to know, and it's hard to tell from the sheet. But the only position that we don't have a plan for right now that has vacant listed will be the high school track and field assistant coach. So, according to the notes, while there are a number of other things that are vacant, those things are in play and likely to be solidified at some point between now and the start of the spring sports season. So, it's hard to tell that from here. But in addition to that, we, Mr. Regina has spoken to me about changing some of the ways that we advertise for coaches. Specifically, there's been a process that has been primarily managed solely by the athletic office versus coming specifically through the HR office and using some additional tools. So, we're planning on making that change.
Great. That sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the personnel items? Seeing none. All those in favor? Okay. The motion carries. Curriculum and programs. Dr. Katona, you're off the hook tonight. Policy. We have six policies for first reading, and two that are up for a vote this evening as a second read. So, can I have a motion to approve the second read policies as presented here? Policy 321 and policy 818.1. Ms. Hall? Second, Mr. Navarrette? Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? The motion carries. And now, on to gifts, donations, and sponsorships. We've got four gifts, donations, and sponsorships. And we have nine trips, the bulk of which look like they are for the outdoor education at Skyview. May I have a motion to approve the gifts and donations and trips as presented? Mr. Winters? And a second, Ms. Hall? Are there any comments from the board on these items? Seeing none. All those in favor? And the motion carries 9-0. Okay. Now, on to the 2019-2020 school calendar as attached. May I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented here this evening? Ms. Reese? And a second, Ms. Cancro? Are there any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Winters?
Dr. Zerbi, could you explain Act 80 days and how they're used in the accounting of the calendar, please?
Certainly. Act 80 days, Act 80 is a, certainly, an act that allows for school entities to perform, with their teachers, perform certain activities in the schools that count as a student attendance days. So, for example, the law requires that public schools provide 180 days of instruction. And depending on the level, there's also a number of hours per level. So, it is our requirement each year to meet the number of days and to meet the number of hours. And you need to meet both. It's not one or the other. And in order to provide professional development, we are allowed to use a number of days in that 180 for professional development of teachers, so long as that number of days doesn't inhibit our ability to meet the number of hours. So, we could take, we could use no days. We could use one day. We could use theoretically maybe 10 days. But without sitting here doing the math, I can't tell you the maximum that we can use. And we use various levels of Act 80 days depending on the level. So, as an example, we use, we do parent-teacher conferences, which is an eligible activity to inform parents of the student's progress and to work with parents on trying to support students. And that's one of the activities. And we do that more at the elementary, Skyview, Arcola level than we would at the high school, which may account for some of the differences in the number of days that students attend and/or don't attend, actually.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. And also, the PDE has to approve the number of days? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And in the case of the strike, that, once the strike occurred, those approvals were just, as part of the Act 80 law, were taken away?
Yeah. I think it's important to know that there's, on this calendar, there are Act 80 days and in-service days. They're two different things. You may actually find us performing some of the same types of activities, meaning professional development. But in-service days are contractual and are days that are built in, in an agreement between the board and the teachers to work. That does not play into the 180 days, nor is it counted similarly as an Act 80 day. And if there was a strike, or when there was a strike, the Department of Education determines that all use of such Act 80 days is no longer available, so that it provides the maximum number of available days within the school year, which would end June 30 of a given year, to allow for student attendance.
Thank you for your clarification.
Any other comments or questions on the calendar? All right. All those in favor? And the motion carries. And saving the best for last. May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Special Olympics Pennsylvania and the Mathacton School District to provide a unified sports program at Mathacton High School beginning spring of 2019, where it is estimated that the annual cost of such program will be $5,000? Mr. Winters? And a second, Ms. Drummond? Any comments from the board?
Just wanted to reiterate what we said at the Education Committee and last week. Thank you to the teachers that brought, that did a lot of the research, and to Dr. Spiewak, and Dr. Sargini, and to the Special Education Alliance, and to everyone who's been involved so far and will be involved in the future. And a special thank you for getting it up and running this spring. It's awesome.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. The motion carries 9-0.
So, I just want to make a comment. So, when our students read off the athletic activities, we'll be adding an extra sport. So, thank you for your approval.
All right. So, we have some dates coming up in March, our usual slate of meetings. And are there any old business items for this evening? Any new business items?
Not really new business or old business exactly. But I just want to remind the board that we need to get cracking on our post-prom hallway. So, Paul's next up on transparencies, and I gotta go buy some gold paint. So, try to keep these Tuesdays and Thursdays open, please, everybody, because I'm the contact person, and you're all making me very nervous.
Well, if I could just make a comment to that. I know that, and I appreciate the fact that the board has taken such a strong interest in this. And as a result of an event that I was at probably around December of this past year, I was apprised of the fact that we are now approaching here in April the 20th consecutive year of post-prom activity. And so, while I've shared with the board, and you know that this is coming, I want you to know that at our work session scheduled for April 16th, we would like to recognize approximately 25 leaders and any other volunteers that have participated in the post-prom as a way to say thank you for keeping our children safe for all these years. So, there'll be more to come on that. Amanda Kelly, of course, is helping us lead that charge. And my secretary, we call her the event planner now. You might call her the board secretary. She does get involved in a lot of those things as well, and has some great ideas. As many of you who know her understand what I'm talking about. But nonetheless, I look forward to being able to recognize, you know, a history of keeping our children safe. It's one of the most, you know, most challenging times in a high school career. So, we'll look forward to that. We'll have more information out. The invitation just started going out to all of the leaders of those programs. So, we're starting to get a lot of good feedback. In fact, it was very interesting, and you'll find it interesting, that the first two organizers and the 30 people that supported them that first year will be here. And, not here, because we're actually going to do it in the high school auditorium, because we're not going to be able to fit everybody in here. But nonetheless, they have a tremendous story to share. And I'm looking forward to it, because I think it'll knock your socks off. Thanks.
All right. That's quite the teaser. Anybody else with new business? All right. So, at this time, we will open it up to courtesy of the floor. Mr. Andrews.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. A few years ago, I got a small card that, as you can see, if you have good eyesight, it says at the top, PSBA. It stands for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. And on the back of the card, it has a few words that won't take four minutes. And I thought I had a minute and a half left from earlier in the evening, but now it's down to zero. Maybe it can stay at zero. PSBA Standards for Effective School Governance. To promote student growth and achievement, an effective school board, 1, advocates for a thorough and efficient system of public education; 2, models responsible governance and leadership; 3, governs through policy; 4, ensures that effective planning occurs; 5, monitors results; and 6, communicates with and engages the community. And then, at the very bottom in fine print, something about a copyright, 2005 by PSBA. It's a very, very brief and clear and thorough discussion of the roles that you play, again, to promote student growth and achievement. I also spent a few days recently analyzing enrollments across the county in the public schools and birth rates leading to those students in the various districts. And so, looking at the PDE enrollment details year by year, I noticed the years in which a number of school districts start at full-day kindergarten. I haven't analyzed things completely yet, but a number of times when enrollment goes down, that's when the school districts institute full-day kindergarten. So, it makes me wonder that, is it for the benefit of the students? Or is it for the benefit of the teachers that might lose their jobs because of declining enrollment? That's a question that I may come to get an answer to. So, and at one of the recent committee meetings, there was extensive discussion, I think by Dr. Sargini, the high school principal, about coming to a conclusion relative to class rank. It was a very thorough study involving surveys, various, many inputs. And it came to an excellent conclusion, I think. And apparently, it was something that was initiated at a committee meeting by a member of the public, name unknown to me, who had initiated the discussion over three years ago. Now, similarly, with regard to committee inputs or board meeting inputs, I've made inputs suggesting that rather than one monstrous annual prom, suggesting that rather than one monstrous annual prom, that we instead ought to have a junior prom and a separate senior prom, primarily because those two groups have different interests, they're at different points in their lives, and also, it's very, you know, I can imagine that that event with 800-plus people at it is a mob scene, whereas if you had the two separate proms, it would be half-size, and more manageable, and likely more enjoyable. Now, I've heard that a year ahead that...
Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Yes. You know, I've heard that a year ahead of time that the high school teachers do all the planning for that, so that there's no discussion beyond the high school teachers. You know, this is multiple times that I've brought the subject up, and aside from being cut off by a timekeeper, I think...
Mr. Andrews, please have a seat.
... deserves some merit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Malik.
Do you have papers, Dr. Malik?
Clock working, or no? Poetic justice. Jim Malik-Worcester, that is poetic justice, the clock breaking, that's so good. I gave you a document, and I would suggest that, please don't rip it up, it's for anger management classes, and I believe that at least one of you would benefit from them. I think it's important to remain calm, cool, and collected when dealing with and listening to the public. At the last meeting, I made reference to you guys communicating with the public via postcards. So I figured I'd give you an idea of what I was talking about. These are the kind of postcards I get. See, it says, "Want to buy your house for cash?" This is how you, this is the kind of communication you get by postcard. Okay? This is what we look at, postcard. This is what I get from my dentist, reminding me to come in for my floss, floss my teeth. This, you don't send these out if you're doing any serious communication with people. Okay? So I'd suggest rethinking that option when you're going to communicate with the public, because that's a joke. Also talked about Dr. Zerby's presentation for an option D, and the $14 million in cost avoidance, and nobody would tell me what that meant exactly. Now, I'm assuming, and I'm going to assume this because nobody gave me an answer, the $14 million is construction only. It's not personnel savings, or any, and operational. And if that's the case, that number is almost $4 million higher than what Milo and McBreen estimated. Because their number for five-year projected cost avoidance was 14-8, that included not only the construction cost, but the personnel and operational costs of almost $1 million a year for five years. So if Dr. Zerby's correct, and the construction cost is 14 million, you have to add another four to that over five years. So it's actually a cost avoidance of $18 million over five years. That's the true savings, the true cost avoidance over five years. That's what we should have been presented with over five years. The 22 million is actually more like 25 or 26 million, based on the new number for construction, because the new number is $3 million or $4 million higher. So that should have been the number we were, should have been given. So that's why I asked the questions I asked last time. Now, the other thing I gave you, the second page of the handout I gave you, deals with the educational opportunities that weren't included in option D. And there's about, what, 12 of them? None of them made it to option D, or any of the other options that included closing Arrowhead. All of those were beneficial and should have been on the pro side. None of them made it. So we were given a skewed view of, you know, what should have been done. And that all needs to be reevaluated and represented...
Please wrap up.
Sure. Should be represented to the public, because we were given faulty information. We were given skewed information, and it all needs to be redone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Beam, and then Ms. Katz, I believe you also.
Jim Beam-Worcester. You hear at virtually every meeting about issues and concerns that are raised about the way in which you're dealing with the school district. I appreciated Mr. Andrews reading what he did from his card. I think all those are self-evident, extremely important, and I, for one, think that you are fulfilling everything that's on that card, and I think your good efforts are noted by the vast majority of people in this community. And because of that, and because of the partnership that's developing among the faculty, and you, and the community, and the Math Acton Education Foundation, we're able to raise funds in order to provide money for important programs that otherwise would not be able to be fulfilled. And you heard Ms. Ricky refer to the elementary school library program, you know, that is going to cost over $100,000. The foundation is going to pay for that. We haven't voted on it yet, so that's not official, but that is the path in which we're headed, and it's just one example of many, and where this community is coming together. This school district, everyone within this school district is coming together. Individuals, businesses, many of you on the board individually are participating and working together, it just shows what we can do for the benefit of these students going forward. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Ms. Katz, thank you for your patience.
I want to echo what Mrs. Reese said earlier to thank everyone, and I'm afraid I'm going to miss somebody, but I'm going to try. Dr. Zerby, Dr. Spiewak, Dr. Sergini, and all of you from the board who voted tonight to bring unified sports to us. We picked up a lot of traction since February, pun intended. So we are really excited, so on behalf of the Special Education Alliance, I want to say thank you, and thank you for bringing this to Math Acton. And Brianna's excited that it's going to be there for her when she's in high school, right?
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Reese, second from Ms. Drummond, and meeting adjourned.